An apple order, this school board meeting on January 7th, 2019. Mr. Barlow has requested to participate via telephone and my understanding is that he is on the phone now. We need a motion for him to participate and we need... Oh, sorry. Mr. Barlow needs to state his location and the reason for his absence.
Mr. Barlow, can you state your reason for being absent?
Oh, yeah.
And your location?
Yes, I am in the District of Columbia here and I am on a work trip.
Mr. Superintendent, it's a move.
Second.
We have a motion to have Mr. Barlow participate by Mr. Young and a second by... Who was that? Ms. Page. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Ty.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Thank you.
For the record, we can do a roll call with the board members present for the meeting. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
And you have...
Mr. Superintendent.
The next item is I... I'm sorry, thank you. We are due to have to present it to tonight. Mr. Kaminsky, would you like to introduce her?
Yes, everybody, I'd like to welcome Deja Waller. Deja is a senior at Armstrong High School and she was elected Miss Armstrong in 2018-19. She...I'm not done. She is an Armstrong Ambassador, a member of the National Honor Society, and one of the ways that I got to get to know Deja is at one of my community meetings at Armstrong, where by and far she asked the best and toughest questions of the night. And so it was a wonderful opportunity to meet her, but also some of you may know her from her speech during the March for More, which was just incredible on the steps of the Capitol. And it was incredible to see her and her peers speak on their behalf and advocate on their behalf. And for me, certainly, hearing Deja and Ty and Isaku and the rest of your peers speak was by far the highlight of that day. And Deja is also on my Student Advisory Council, and so I get to hear her incredible thoughts and perspectives every month. So she plans on attending Bridgewater College, where she will major in criminology. And can you please join me in welcoming Deja? Do you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Excellent. Is your family or do we have any Armstrong staff, teachers? All right. Welcome.
Okay, the next item is item 1.02, election of officers chairman and vice chairman.
Ms. Owen?
I move that Dawn Page be reelected as our board chair.
Second. I nominate...
Okay. Sorry, I'm gonna...apparently it's not gonna last long. We have a motion on the table from Ms. Owen to nominate Ms. Page that was seconded by Ms. Burke and now Ms. Gibson.
I nominate Pat Sapini as our chair.
And do we have a second for that?
Second.
We have also a nomination for Dr. Sapini with a second, from Ms. Gibson with a second, Ms. Cosby. Any other nominations? Any discussion? Ms. Burke?
It's been a pleasure being on the board for the past about 14 months. I've really enjoyed working with my colleagues here. I think we've come a long way. For example, we're finally having a new school in the East End, a couple of new schools in South Side, one being George Mason Elementary School that's been on the shelf for 30 years. And I'm elated about that. Number two, we had to uncover many unfortunate situations that because of the leadership of our superintendent, we've been able to move forward on the attendance piece, the transfer piece. Number three, while being on the board and less than before a year was up, we were able under the leadership of Dawn Page, our chair, to make sure the safety issues were addressed over 200 some odd door locks, I believe, by cleaning up the bathroom, we've been moving progressively well. And I must say this, we all, there's a lot to be done. Some things we wonder how it can be done, but it will be done. And we're on to a good slow right now. And I must give Mrs. Page due credit. She always brings us back to every child. Not about the board, other things that's issued, but it's always about the child. She always states every child, no matter whether we're talking about facilities, money, what we do have. We always talk about what we don't have. Very seldom we talk about what we do have, and Ms. Page has done that. Then we also, as a board, something that comes to mind with me is that Mr. Kaminsky is our superintendent. And his responsibility, he's been given the charge to lead the system. Our charge as the board is to manage his performance, monitor his performance and hold him accountable, but it's also not to micromanage. Because so much time, and I've seen this in my 38 years plus, that we can get off topic of what is needed for every child because of other things that may come to surface. Now, we can ask questions, we can discuss at length, but the main thing is the main thing. And that's why I support Dawn Page. And Ms. Door, I'm gonna nominate this for chair. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Young?
Like Ms. Burke, I'm really excited about the trajectory of this board and, more importantly, of Richmond Public Schools. I've been very candid in, as it relates to my displeasure in 2017 and absent, mutually partying ways with a former superintendent, I candidly thought we got a little done. 2018, in my opinion, couldn't have been any different. It was really a 180, and I'm excited about what we're gonna do in 2019. I share with the folks in the community all the time when I attempt to articulate what I'm doing now, that I attribute that to my colleagues, to the school board, but also to our new superintendent and to our staff. And I think it's important for us to celebrate that and intend to continue to celebrate that. And I'm really excited about what we're gonna do as a team in 2019. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Young?
Like Ms. Burke, I'm really excited about the trajectory of this board and, more importantly, of Richmond Public Schools. I've been very candid in, as it relates to my displeasure in 2017 and absent, mutually partying ways with a former superintendent, I candidly thought we got a little done. 2018, in my opinion, couldn't have been any different. It was really a 180, and I'm excited about what we're gonna do in 2019. I share with the folks in the community all the time when I attempt to articulate what I'm doing now, that I attribute that to my colleagues, to the school board, but also to our new superintendent and to our staff. And I think it's important for us to celebrate that and intend to continue to celebrate that. And I'm really excited about what we're gonna do as a team in 2019. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have, the first motion was for Ms. Page by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Burke.
So that'd be the first vote. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Did you hear everything? So we're voting on chair, Ms. Page has been nominated.
Hearing?
Just wanted to make sure you can hear us, you're voting on chair and Ms. Page has been nominated.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cosby?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
No.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
And that motion does pass 5-4, so we do not need to take a vote on the second motion. The next item, Mr. Kaminsky, I'm sorry. Ms. Page, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Young.
colleagues for supporting me and this leadership effort. We are a team, we are a team of one. We represent nine districts, but we are a team of one. And that's really, that's at the core of this board. We are a team of one. While we are in the minority or the majority, we are still a team of one. We have a vision, a strategic plan that has given us our direction, our marching orders for the next five years that will impact student achievement. Because that's our number one person, purpose, student achievement. It's not about us at the end of the day, it's about all 24,000 students that we serve in this district. That is at the core of why we were elected. Our reason for being here is not about one child versus another child, but it's about every child in Richmond Public Schools. We all know, the school board sets the vision and goals of the school district and holds the district accountable for results. One school board member cannot do the job alone. Effective school board members contribute their unique talents while collaborating and working as a team. There's no "I" in team, there's "we." A team without, with other board members. And again, I thank you and I'm very humbled to serve as the chair for the 2019 calendar year. Thank you.
Next item? The next item, our man of chairs, to receive nominations from the board for vice chair.
I nominate Pat Sapini.
Second.
I nominate Ms. Dor.
It's been moved by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Cosby to nominate Patrick Sapini for vice chair. And it's been motioned by Ms. Burke and seconded by Ms. Owen to nominate Ms. Elizabeth Door for vice chair. Any discussion? All the question?
Motion was made by Ms. Gibson to nominate Dr. Sapini for vice chair, seconded by Ms. Cosby. Ms. Door?
No.
Mr. Barlow, can you still hear me? Mr. Barlow?
No, my apologies.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Ty.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
No.
Motion fails 4-5. So the next motion is for Ms. Door to be vice chair, that's seconded by Ms. Owen. I'm sorry. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
No.
And Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-3. What? Ms. Door?
I don't have much to say, just thank you and I'm looking forward to getting to the hard work, so.
Madam Chair, before we move forward, congratulations to you and Ms. Door on those positions. We do need to add the chisder, we need to add students across, we need to move item 8.02, which is received for actions in 2019, which encompasses two legislative agenda, to 7.04, which is going to move that out of consent into the board action, and that'll be the only chance I have to adjourn at this time.
You can roll two.
I'm going to give you a prayer for the agenda as amended.
Correct?
The agenda has been... On in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, this agenda has been adopted as amended.
The next item is item 1.03, the appointment of a clerk and deputy clerk, the appointment that has come from the school board.
So we need a motion to set up clerk Angela Wilson and our deputy clerk is Ms. Kimberly Collins. So we need a motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to appoint the clerk as Angela Wilson and Angela Wilson, and deputy clerk is Kimberly Collins. Any discussion?
All the question? Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you.
You said the same. You made yes?
Honestly, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Do you vote to approve Angie Wilson and Ken Collins as clerk and deputy clerk? Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is upon the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint an agent and deputy agent and approve for them to act and sign in superintendent's absence.
So board members, Dr. Tracy F. and Mrs. Darren Simmons are the individuals for those positions. Be your motion?
Chair, some use.
Second.
So it was, the motion was made by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion?
On in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, our agent and deputy agent, Dr. Tracy F. and Mrs. Darren Simmons. Next item?
The next item is 1.05, to set your meeting dates currently on the first and third Monday at 6:00. If Monday is a holiday, that meeting is moved to a Tuesday. So if you want to keep those dates, you need to make that decision to keep or change. Currently, the board meetings are held on the first and third Monday of each month, beginning at 6:00 P.M. If Monday is a holiday, the meeting is automatically moved to that Tuesday.
In the shared annual calendar, I noticed that there was not a meeting scheduled on the first day of school this year, and it looked like in November there were meetings back to back.
The calendar has been approved previously without showing that meeting on the first day of school, which is Tuesday. Last year, this board did decide to meet, and I think they have requested to put it past if with regards to November, your meetings are back to back due to either the Thanksgiving holiday or the V S D A Annual Conference.
So my preference would be to also this year have a meeting on the first day of school. I know there was a lot of attendance in the community at that meeting, so just wanted to note that.
This, point of clarification, this discussion, though, does not touch upon the schedule for the budget work session?
No.
Okay. Understood. The administration welcomes a meeting on the first day of school.
So we need a motion?
I'm good that we continue our regular meeting schedule, including meeting on the first day of school, that the board will meet on the first and third Monday of the month. Mr. Barlow?
Mr. Barlow, the motion has been to keep our same calendar and ensure that we meet on the first day of school. Are you in favor of that?
Yes, they do.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item? The next item is item 2, your recognitions. Ms. Kaminsky?
Good evening, everyone. We are going to begin with our 2018 R E D Awards for changing awards, and we have three individuals to recognize. So let's do this. I will share those three names, and then if I could have those three individuals come up along with family and staff from school, that would be absolutely wonderful. Our first winner is Kathy Pascal from Franklin Hill. Our second is Keisha King from Woodville. And our third is Matthew Wester also. As Ms. Page and Ms. Door come down, can y'all tell them the super cool things that you get to do? Because I've been around a lot of teacher awards in my time, but this is by far the coolest award I have ever come across. So go ahead, Kathy, want to start with you?
Sure. For my award, for my project, what I'm going to do is take a three-week trip through several national parks, assuming they open again throughout the west, so starting with the Grand Canyon and traveling north all the way to Glacier National Park.
I'll be going to Iceland this June and then Patagonia fall 2020, and basically doing a lot of recreational activities that have to do with a lot of earth science topics. So kayaking with glaciers, snorkeling between the Continental Divide and Iceland, a lot of interesting, cool things like that.
Like I said.
This is the seventh district, mind you. And also, this is the young lady from Woodville was not here.
Yes.
That's all.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini? Ms. Casby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
The next item.
The next item is item 2, your recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. We are going to begin with our 2018 R E V Awards for teaching sports. And we have three individuals to recognize. So let's do this. I will share those three names and then if I could have those three individuals come up along with family and staff from school, that would be absolutely wonderful. Our first winner is Kathy Pascal from Franklinville. Our second is Keisha King from Woodville. Third is Matthew Webster also. All right. As Ms. Page and Ms. Dorr come down, can y'all tell them the super cool things that you get to do? Because I've been around a lot of teacher awards in my time, but this is by far the coolest award I have ever come across. So go ahead. Kathy, want to start with you?
Sure. For my award, for my project, what I'm going to do is take a three-week trip through several national parks, assuming they open again. Throughout the West, so starting with the Grand Canyon and traveling north all the way to Glacier National Park.
I'll be going to Iceland this June and then Patagonia fall 2020. And basically doing a lot of recreational activities that have to do with a lot of earth science topics. So kayaking glaciers, snorkeling between the Continental Divide and Iceland. A lot of interesting, cool things like that.
Like Iceland.
This is the seventh district, mind you.
And also, this is the young lady from Woodville, who's not here.
Yes. That's also the seventh district. So ladies and gentlemen, great things are happening. You heard it tonight, and I am so proud and delighted. It's such a wonderful opportunity to work with these two excellent, awesome teachers. And Colonel Hudson is here and Colonel Day and some of our cadets as well from Franklin. So you and staff as well, you all, it is open for you now. Give him his prize. So this is here on, this is the team, okay? My glasses on, okay? 2018 R E V Award for Teaching Excellence. Richmond Public Schools presents this award to Kathy Pascal. Teacher, Franklin Military Academy. Don C. Page, School Board Chair. Jason Cameron Superintendent. January 7th, 2019. This is my great right here. Got some projects together. 2018 R E V Award. How much money do I get?
Eleven thousand five hundred.
Let's give her another hand. 2018 R E V Award for Teaching Excellence. Richmond Public Schools presents this award to Matthew Webster. Teacher, Franklin Military Academy. Don C. Page, School Board Chair. Jason Cameron Superintendent. January 7th, 2019.
Dorr. Richmond Public Schools presents this award to Keisha King. Teacher at Woodville Elementary School. The 2018 R E V Award for Teaching Excellence. If my memory serves me correct, Keisha is doing a lot of things, including studying mindfulness and why. Go, Keisha. Don C. Page, School Board Chair. Jason Cameron Superintendent. January 7th, 2019. Can we give it up for Keisha? Open those up and let's get a picture.
Hopefully you all return, you'll get a report. I'll see you tomorrow. You all want to join? Sam, like, Sam, like, come on. Come on, mother.
All right. Here, please. Here we go. One, two, three. Take one more. One, two, three.
Seventh district.
I'm going to slip in here while everybody's moving. I want to recognize Mr. Hudson. I don't know how many of you have seen this article about him in Richmond Magazine this fall. But it shows off that a wonderful man he is. And if you haven't read it, go read it.
In what district?
Cheryl, but he resides in the fourth. He resides in, I happen to know where he lives.
Third district takes a little credit.
We'll share.
Moving on to the next item.
We're still in. All right, as we are getting Mr. Marlowe, we have our next recognition. And that is for our 2019 Richmond Public Schools Teacher of the Year, which is presented to Ashley Morgan from Fox Elementary School.
Thank you. It's an honor and it's a big huge to fill, that's for sure.
Yes. But I'm sure you'll do it quite well. We are extremely, extremely proud of you. And I've had the pleasure of actually seeing you in action at Fox Elementary. And it is truly a joy to see the connection with your kids and how inspiring you are and how truly expert you are. We're so grateful to have you here at R P S. And like Mr. Robinson, wish you all the best as you go on to represent us for the Virginia State Competition. So please join me in congratulating Ashley. Can we have Principal Jacobs come on up?
State teacher with you?
Any family or teachers, just, just, everybody come on in. We have one more recognition. This is for the High School Teacher of Excellence Award for the entire state of Virginia. And this award goes to Eset Kimber from George With High School.
The school is in the film. Oh, she lives in the age.
I am so humble, but I'm also honored to receive this award. I have so many supporters. Miss Angela Moore, Miss Cole Turner, my sister Pamela, Hannah, and Mr. Hager, whom I love dearly. Reba Green, oh, she's just my rock. And my beautiful, beautiful Delta daughter over there, my Aunt Jen is here. And I need to say this, as long as I was a teacher, has been a teacher, George With, my daughter was the captain of the tennis squad. She was there. And everybody, I was like Mama Kim to everybody. And everybody just came to me. And this precious baby here, all she ever says, Mom, I love you. And I'm sharing you with everybody. She's such a sweet woman.
Do we have any other votes from With here? Come on up, everybody.
And I would just like to add, I've been on this Kimber floor since, oh, nine or oh eight, since 2008. And she is a true advocate for our children, our students, and a true community supporter. And I would just congratulate you on this recognition. It's so deserving.
Everybody says science is real.
Science is real. So is English.
Next item.
Next item is item 3, public information. And I don't have to speak in advance. Where's your permission?
If we have members in the audience that would like to speak at this time, you have three minutes. You're speaking as an individual. Five minutes if you are speaking or you have other organizations. If you'd like to speak at this time, please come forward, say your name, and sign in.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present to you. My name is Robert Clayton. And I am the co-founder, along with my colleague, Professor Ben Shields of M I T Sloan, for the transformative 6 through 19 STEM Education Initiative Quality Sports Analytics Club Program. We established this program in 2017 at the Edison Westside High School in Baltimore. And that program ended up in an E S P N documentary, The Five Odds, establishing that if you give young men, women, who otherwise have been underrepresented in STEM education at an advanced level, in STEM role and careers, if you give them the opportunity to perform and you give them a fun and actionable project to realize the potential that they have to be STEM data analytics experts, they will accomplish those goals. We are very proud to have Armstrong High School in partnership with Virginia Union University to be the first sports analytics club in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This is significant because Armstrong was the first public high school in 1865 to educate African-American students in the city of Richmond. And Virginia Union University was established in 1865 as a premier seminary school. So we feel honored that once again, Keisha, congratulations on your honor, that we have the first sports analytics club in the Commonwealth of Virginia and be supported by the first public high school to support African-Americans in the city of Richmond. And one of the very first historically bi colleges to support those individuals joining seminary. It is truly a transformative program. It uses sports as a platform to teach the data analytics of skill development in STEM with fun and actionable and cool projects. And so I welcome every school, I have a commitment from President Lucas, that every school, middle and senior high school in the city of Richmond, R P S, that wishes to establish a club, that they will assign a faculty member from their math, science, and technology department to support that club and to work with collaboratively, teacher at the school. And then we'll bring the assets of M I T, we'll bring the assets of the N B A Washington Wizards, we'll bring the assets of the Washington Nationals to support whatever sport they wish to design and project in, to be actionable for their school and guide those coaches, or to have a person join the Hall of Fame, the Simonton Westerns, and solve the research of the Emerson Westside Club. So thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of the S and C Board, we look forward to working with Armstrong and with Virginia Union faculty on this project.
Thank you.
Greetings, Virginia families. School Board Chair, Don Day. It is indeed an honor to be here today. At the end of each nine weeks, Ms. Gibson, you can probably remember as well as Dr. Sapini, when I was your principal, your kids attended, and we hope then, we do a nine-week awards program. When we receive any information that our teachers will be recognized tonight, we wanted to bring part of our awards program here to the school board meeting. Now, awards programs, the cadets up here can tell you, we recognize them, staff, as well as parents and community leaders that come into our building and do great things. I'm going to let the cadets recognize the individuals on the school board that has not only helped, but help every Tuesday weekend with our cadets in making sure they achieve academically as well as coming to school every day. I'm going to ask the Lancy Gores to start off, and then I'm going to ask the young ladies to do their presentation.
Good evening. Cadet Gordon, and this is for Dr. Patrick Sapini. And he's recognized for being an excellent volunteer at Franklin Military Academy, January 7th, 2019.
Good evening. My name is Matt Elder. And Michael Metzger, we'd like to recognize Dr. Patrick Sapini for your outstanding support and constant assistance and dedication to our school and the community. 2018.
One of the female, Leanne, as you can see, we'd like the male to go first here. Okay, Dad Hampton is going into a presentation at this time.
Good evening. I would like to present this Certificate of Excellence to Ms. Cheryl Burke for being an excellent volunteer at Franklin Military Academy on January 7th, 2019. She's been working with us since we were in sixth grade, and I'm in 10th grade now. So that tells you how long she's been working with us. And she's really a motivating person to be around. And I just really appreciate all her positivity that she brings around us, and it really does mean a lot. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cadet Angela Burke, and I'm here to recognize Ms. Cheryl Burke on behalf of Franklin Military Academy for your outstanding support and constant assistance and dedication to our schools and communities.
Seeing that we have no others to speak at this time, this will move out into the public.
The next item is my school board business receiving an acting on the school down the basketball.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rick Morrison. I'm here from the Health District. And I'm our policy director at Health District, but we've got a few staff working on the formation of the School Health Advisory Board with Dr. Sapini and with Michelle and Jason and you all. So I'm here to answer questions, talk through where you guys are seeing things going on this.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Given our discussion at the last meeting, I would love, the last meeting, for the last time we discussed this, I would love for the chat to try to move quickly to address first and foremost the need for nursing services in all of our schools. And this is something that has come up a number of times, and it's in our strategic plan as well. And I think the second area we talked about is also in the strategic plan around providing more mental health supports for our young people. And so if those could be sort of the first two priority areas. And so if those could be sort of the first two priority areas, and we could set a goal of figuring out with the various health organizations and networks in the region, so that by this coming fall, we would have at least that first goal be close to achieving if not achieving, and that is having nursing services in every one of our schools.
Ms. Dor.
Uh, thanks for stopping by. Could you remind us where we are in the process of the SHAB? And what direction, other than what Mr. Cambers gave to you, you guys need to move forward?
Sure. Um, so we have worked with the board's attorney to draft the bylaws for a potential SHAB. So those bylaws outline the responsibilities and sort of focus of the SHAB, vis a vis content like what Mr. Cambers just talked about, that those responsibilities would be distributed, research options, whether it was a programmatic or policy-driven options, to engage parents and educators and students in the process of looking into the current state of issues as well as those potential new pathways, and to bring more resources to bear, whether that's through new partnerships or expanding existing partnerships with community organizations, funders, whatever it might be, as appropriate and relevant for the topic. And so those bylaws kind of outline what the SHAB would do as well as some process around the SHAB. So it outlines membership sort of qualifications. And the key thing that we've worked on with the board's attorney is how do we get specific about membership on the SHAB while also allowing some latitude of, you know, a lot of different people could be on the SHAB. So for example, we did put some categories that we would ask in an application for folks to respond to. Do you have expertise in some sort of health profession, including mental health, nursing, diet and nutrition, physical activity, and being an M.D. or a nurse in some regard? That's what we asked about. In addition, we ask folks if they're a part of a human services partner for RPS. Are they a part of an organization that's already working in out-of-school time or in-school support in our schools and the city? Or do they work for a city agency that does related work with our kids? And then lastly, are they city residents or RPS parents, RPS students? We just want to have that feel for, are we forming a board that is going to, A, bring some expertise to bear of a diverse nature, and also have a grounding in what is happening in our schools today? So we don't want, you know, just a board that's gonna be thinking about kind of ideal, high in the sky potential. And we also don't want a board that's only sort of down in the weeds of the way things are today. We really want a board that can kind of bridge those two stories, right? So that's another one of the things that the bylaws has worked on. To Ms. Dor's question of sort of what we need to move forward, I think we just need to know that the bylaws, as they've been drafted, work for you all as the board, so that we can move forward with making an application go live. And the application sort of responds directly to the bylaws and sort of outlining responsibilities.
As a point of clarification, so has the board received those bylaws? Yes, or no?
They just took out the feedback. And Cheryl, can you speak to that?
Yes, there was some type of feedback. Ms. Gibson provided feedback saying that we wanted the board to vote on membership. So that was, I think, something that the board need to consider if they wanted incorporate that feedback into the bylaws. The board was also sending a sample of the application as well as a draft communication. So with your sign, I'll give the board with those pieces.
So I just want to make sure, I know that we need to return to this during board action. But if the board wants to have some, I would like to be able to adopt bylaws with whatever amendments seem necessary, just so that it can begin to get the applications out, so we can begin to move forward on this, just filling a sense of urgency given our timeline.
Ms. Gibson?
My recommendation would be to add this to our speaking as an action item with the materials that I can vote it out by the board.
And then just briefly, vis a vis not just the question of application selection, but any number of tasks really. And one of the things that's outlined in the bylaws is that there will be a few members of RPS staff who will be sort of ex officio members, really just people being non-voting members, but sort of participating and bringing expertise. Similarly, our staff from the Health District, since we are cooperative state and city employees, we would also not be voting members, we would be ex officio as well. I think there's some opportunity to have those staff sort of help to quicken or just give you all sort of a shortcut to the process of doing some of the work. So for example, if we get, you know, any number of 30, 50 applications for the SHAB and we have fewer seats than that available, we can sort of do an initial cut, not to tell you all who to approve, but to give you some sense of, it looks like we have this many students and this many teachers and this many medical professionals. So our recommendation would be that you do a cross-section in this way, right? The decision would still lie with the board in however you all decide, whether it's whole board approval or anything else. But we could help to do some initial work on that, so that you all aren't reviewing the applications one by one necessarily, if that's something you guys would find helpful.
So is that the consensus of the board to bring it back at our next meeting this month? The board action? Ms. Burke? So if we have any other feedback? Please do so. November? If we have any additional feedback, please submit that to the clerk by the closer business days on January 11th. So the board action? Since January 2nd.
And then to your comments, Mr. Cambers, about sort of expectancy and trying to move on this. If you all do move forward at the end of this month, or when you do, on our end, we do have a draft application ready to go. So we would just look to work with the administration to get that application live on the website. And we've also discussed making it available in Spanish and English in print at all schools. One of our hopes is that certainly students and teachers will be represented as well as parents. So having that sort of physical availability is something we want to lean into. Thank you.
The next item is item five, Administration Business. And five point zero one is to receive an update on the Memorandum of Understanding with the Virginia Board of Education and the Corrective Action Plan. Will Mr. Cambers do have an introduction?
Yes, before we get to that, I just wanted to briefly introduce a new member of the Senior Leadership Team, Jennifer Bramble, who has joined us as Chief Calm Officer. Jennifer can wave her hand. We are extremely excited to have her as part of the team. This is day one, so we thought we'd get right to it. Ms. Huedaska will handle the personnel actions this evening, but we will transition that work over for the January 22nd meeting. I just wanted to say on behalf of RPS, welcome.
Again, you have the board, welcome as well.
Um, we also have, I'm not sure that we have formally recognized Matthew Stanley, who has joined the team as well in the Office of Engagement as our lobbyist and advocacy organizer. And so we are delighted to have him onboard as well. His depth of knowledge about the General Assembly has been extremely helpful. And when Dr. Harris shares the legislative agenda later this evening, Mr. Stanley will be available as well to answer any detailed questions that you have. But I have to say, it's very, very exciting to have someone on the team who knows all the ins and outs of the legislative process. And just in the short time that he's been here, has been a huge, huge help to us. So welcome.
Again, welcome to RPS.
All right. Now, the update on the Memorandum of Understanding with the Virginia Board of Education and the Corrective Action Plan. We held our last Corrective Action Plan meeting on December 19th, which also had attendance, Dr. Lane and Mr. Gecker, State Superintendent and President of the Virginia Board of Education. And we had a number of individuals attend, some communities, some teachers, some family members. And during that meeting, we did a discussion of each of the five areas of the CAP with a sort of round robin type experience, so that everyone could have an opportunity to kind of go deep on each of the areas. And that was followed by an open discussion for the whole board. By and large, I think it was a very successful meeting, so much so that Dr. Lane indicated publicly that he intends to recommend approval of the Corrective Action Plan when the board takes it up for final action on January 24th. So we are delighted that hopefully by the end of January, we will have an official Corrective Action Plan, which was required by the MOU. Also required by the MOU is a meeting with the Office of School Quality. They just call that every two months. Our first official one of those meetings starts in February, even though we meet with them almost every day right now. But that will be our first official meeting focused specifically on the CAP as distinct from, say, the high school transcript work and other matters that we have had to address. And that's the update.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you for that update. One question regarding the school culture and climate survey that we discussed at our meeting. I was just curious if we are, have we promoted the survey? And is there a hope to get 100% participation in that survey?
Yes, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Huedaska to come up and speak to that, because I know she has been on here as well.
Hello, good evening. Um, yes, so we are going to, I know that in the meeting, I specifically talked about the middle school survey. We're actually looking, because the video we does a climate survey, actually through grades for Group 12, of talking with them about doing it expansively for all students to be able to use that as some of our baseline data in the strategic plan for information around student satisfaction. They also have a climate survey for both teachers and non-instructional staff. So we're looking at how we'll use all of those together. The window for the middle school survey is specified for beginning at the end of January through March. We do have things we need to do before we can do it. So we'll probably be looking to administer it mid-February or so. There's communications that need to go out to families, obviously communications to principals, et cetera. So we have time, but part of the reason that we're delaying to February is also because we want to see if we can do that in tandem with all of the other grades. And yes, it's our goal to have 90 to 100% response rate. So A, it's representative, but B, that it can serve as robust baseline data for the strategic plan. So yes, that will, that will happen in the next week.
And also I would love to add to that, not the survey, but information regarding the two-meeting requirement. I will send that out, the information sent out to more members as well. And that's requiring by the MOU.
The next item is five point zero two, receive an update from the Joint Construction Team.
Good evening, School Board. I'm John Ben-Gerretl. We'd like to give an update on the progress of the construction. As you know, the JCT meets weekly as a group comprised of administrators from RPS and from the city side. And we pretty much coordinate the door mason, the green, and the app, the middle school and whole street projects. I do want to note that on December 19th, we actually held groundbreaking ceremonies to do for schools, which was my major experience. So it was a testament to the wonderful things that happened in the city and RPS working together for us. So with that said, I want to turn it over to Ben Gerretl, who is the Director of Procurement Services for the City.
Thank you, Darren. Good afternoon, honorable members of the School Board, Sumit and Cambers, ladies and gentlemen. As was stated, I'm Ben Gerretl, Director of Procurement Services for the city of Richmond, and purposes for me to give you an update on the procurement of the schools. We are, I cannot discuss specifics yet, because we are still in the cone of silence period, where I can only give you generalities. And just as a reminder, remember that in February, City Council adopted the 1.5% bills tax in order to generate the 150 million we need for the schools. We received the request for proposals for design services. And as you know, we awarded three contracts each to RRMM architects. And the request for proposals for construction managers at risk were posted on October 22nd with a due date of November 21st. We received the proposals and distributed those proposals to the evaluation panel for CM at Risk. There are two RPS members on the evaluation panel, two from the city, representation from the Office of Managed, I'm sorry, Minority Business Development. And we are, the meetings are facilitated by the Department of Procurement Services. The panel has held several meetings since the proposals were distributed. They are, as I mentioned, facilitated by our senior contract specialists. And I have made the point of attending all of these meetings in order to be front center, so to speak, of the proceedings. And I commend the participants. There is a lot of reading, there's a lot of careful consideration that goes into the process. And they have asked thoughtful questions, they have made meaningful comments about the proposals and what they've received. The panel's work will conclude with recommendation of awards, one for each of the schools. And the city attorney's office will then review and approve as to form the contracts with each construction manager at risk firm. The offer will sign the contract, and then the contracts will come to me for signature. We expect all of this to be completed by January 25th. The evaluation panel is expected to give me a recommendation by Monday, the 14th. The construction notice to proceed after the contracts have been signed, those construction notices to be, are expected to be given in February. And as you know, the end product is supposed to be August of 2020. And we are doing everything that we can to make sure that happens. There is a post-construction administration process that includes contract administration, and that is to monitor and manage the vendors, the proposers, the offers, to make sure that those things that are outlined in their contracts are actually being done. We do have the 40% minority utilization goal in each of the schools. I will say that there have been a number of rumors circulating in the projects of this financial magnitude, you can expect that to be the case. But we have heightened awareness and extraordinary scrutiny over the process. And as I mentioned, I have been and I will continue to be physically present for the evaluation panel members, and I am not a voting member. My goal is to make sure that the process is pristine and the integrity of the process can be tested too. That concludes my comments. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My other question regards the, I forget precisely how you described it, but the first contractual process, or processes, plural. Would that, or could that, if this, if this group in Would that, or could that, if this, if this group in collaboration with the city agreed, could it include demolition or raising of existing facilities? Or would that would be, would need to, that would be a separate procurement, I presume?
The, the only demolition that I believe is in question is the existing Elkhart Thompson facility. I believe that, of course, the whole street property is already cleared. And to my understanding, the only one in question is the existing Elkhart Thompson on.
That's the one I'm referring to.
Okay.
If I can jump in, per the board's request, we have deferred a decision on that until the resuming process occurs. And so for now, we have instructed the city to not include the demolition of the Thompson building at this time. Obviously, the Green and Mason building demolitions are a part of the process. Yes.
And also, I would just follow up on, I know we're expected to receive a report as far as the 1.5% bills tax increase.
I can, we can have Laura from the city's finance department come and share on that. I believe that is a bit outside of Ms. Gurel's purview, if that's correct.
Yes, those revenues are tracked and managed by the city's debt and investment manager. And we have had anecdotal conversations about how well into going, but your best bet to get empirical data on that is from Mr. Simmons.
And we just wanted to be on the radar because I've heard that he tendentially should expect a report by January 24th.
Well, no, that'd mean a lot of chicken piastres, so. All right, tough room. But for you all apart, I just want to say, we said this at the groundbreaking, but I want to say it again, how grateful we are to the RPS team and to the city's team. I don't think people fully understand how much time and effort goes into making these decisions around contracts, reading literally thousands of pages of proposals about things like sheetrock and beams and bricks. But they do it with great conviction so that we can get the right outcome for our kids. And I just want to thank you both. I know your holidays have been impacted by this. And I was just so thrilled at the groundbreakings to be able to begin to see the tangible results of this work. And in construction news, I just want to congratulate Mr. Simmons because his, his house is almost done for him to live in, which is very exciting.
So we have one more question, Ms. Gibson?
I apologize if you go to this already. The timing, so the timing when the cone of silence will, will be, will not be lifted?
Will be lifted, that's right. Once the contracts have been fully executed by all parties, then the information about the entire process becomes publicly available, and the cone of silence will be lifted. So that's around February, January 25th is the target date to get the contracts executed because we want to have the notice to proceed in the contractors, the construction manager at risk contractor's hands, so the construction can get it.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next item is 5.03, receive an update on high school transcripts.
Good evening, Madam Chair, vice chair, board members, superintendent cameras. I am, I'm thinking of the next one. A update again. Here to present an update for our high school transcripts. As you, as you know, to recap, through work conducted in partnership with the Virginia Department of Education, all Conference of High School transcripts, Conference of High Schools received a transcript audit over the summer and into August. And late fall, a rather large report was issued and outlined the various areas that we needed to tackle. So I'm here to update you on that work and preview some items for your action that are required based on the complexities that are arising as we dig into transcripts. So you go to the next slide, please. So thus far, there's a whole host of things within the, within the audit report, but I wanted to highlight a few things. So the first is, if you remember back in the early, early fall, we had to address the 140 credit hour requirement through our bell schedules with our Conference of High Schools, which we did take care of. We also have recently updated and completed the review and sign off on the VDOE on our transcript format. There are about 35 individual requirements that the state has for what must be present on a transcript. And all of those items were not present on our previous transcript. As you know, from last spring, there were certainly reporting errors and calculation errors, but there, our transcript format was also out of compliance with state regulations. And we also received format feedback from family members and students that the format was also not very user friendly. So we have finally updated that format and have, over the last three weeks, been running quality tests to make sure that each of those fields is populating correctly. We're also, we've been doing a ton of work around interrogating and really codifying business rules that our technical teams can use to ensure that the right information is feeding into the systems. So I would, so our transcript template is, is complete and ready to go and is in full compliance with the state. And I think it looks a lot cleaner, and I think families and students will be happy to see that soon. And we have ongoing work, but as we're doing this, we are codifying all the processes and steps to make sure that the systems also feed. And we've also spent the last couple of months, please stay back a bit. Collecting documentation to see if we can retain any of the local credits, most local courses, to see if we can retain any of the credit for those local courses. And I'll give some context on this in just a bit. But we have collected all the documentation to bring to you tonight a list of courses that we are asking you to retroactively approve so that students can retain credit for a select number of those courses. So that process is complete. And then we've also begun work of reviewing every senior transcript line by line. To date, our school counseling teams and school administration teams have reviewed 1,200, nearly 1,200 senior transcripts, one by one, with a checklist and a very, I would say meticulous process that takes about 20 to 30 minutes per transcript. And our counselors have just been fantastic. So all senior transcripts have gone through a first review. This week, we are doing a dry run on second review. And next week, the VDOE teams will come to do final verification and sign off that the, every student's transcript individually is accurate and correct. So that, the full completion date is February 2nd because we want to be able to run transcripts, GPAs, and class rank at the end of the first semester. And so to, by February 1st is when families and students will get their updated transcript as well as a letter outlining how, if at all, they were impacted in terms of any credit adjustments that were made on their transcript. The other large step in this whole process is ensuring that our course offerings from the beginning are approved courses, whether those are state-approved courses or locally-approved courses. And there is, and that the codes are correct, and the credits associated with those courses are correct, and the title of those courses are correct, and that there is accompanying standards and curriculum with any course that we offer. So we have, we began that work alongside, parallel this work. And so we plan to bring you all a program of studies for the 1920 school year in early March because we have a target completion date of our whole draft by the end of February. So as we are doing this correction process, we are using that to ensure that any courses that negative to our 1920 course catalog are courses that are 100% verified and approved and correctly labeled, coded, et cetera. So that is in progress. And then, once our senior transcripts are completed at the end of this month, we will then begin reviewing transcripts for the ninth through 12th, ninth through 11th grade students. And we hope that work will go a bit more speedily as we, as our counselors and teams become more fluent in the requirements. But I just really want to give a shout out to our high school teams. They have been diligently working, also through the holidays, to make sure that this is all done correctly. So as I voiced over, the process that we've been following with the DOE is we have had, we've, schools print every individual transcript, and in partnership with a DOE staff member, they review line by line, mark that up. Counselors then make those corrections. We're also making corrections universally for those we can make within our acting system. And, and then, as I said, next week, the state will come and verify that those corrections are in fact accurate, and then that class went to be complete for each grade level.
So we're going to come back to the action and, again, by item 7.03, but I want to give some highlights of recommendations we're bringing to you. So as we've gone through this process, we knew that we would have to bring you likely developed courses for approval, and some other items have come up. Each day, we're allowing some new piece of information. And it's, I did it simultaneously and frustrating at the same time. So actually, now we need to retroactively approve likely developed courses. And again, there's a subset of those, we do have a board policy in the past here that can, a policy that I'm the process, we could tie it to likely developed courses, but we do not have any evidence that that package has ever been tied in. Therefore, the state either has this non-nice exception to retroactively approve likely developed courses, then it's not a certain criteria. So we are doing a set of ways to use the action in just a bit. The second action is, in reviewing our business work, especially, in some of our specialties is there's graduation of candidates exceed the that of the state. And so in other ways, graduation of candidates exceed that of the state, LPL has to first approve that, and then the state bill has to agree that. So the action that we are bringing to you on action two is, I really got that inside me, clarity and paper and specific and current practice. For example, find the military, as we just said, our number that connects, look that is, that seems to take a military-related kills every year as that was a graduation of candidate. That is a burden beyond the state's power limit. And so, study ladder is actually approved. And so we are asking you to make that approve it this evening so that we can submit that to the state or the state in there to do that. The other is, which the community provides you do, may I give a strength in unique nature of this community, there is a number of credits that, that are done beyond the state of talent that have given us that for many years, and it just needs a drop in size of that. We are going to actually pin it on this action because I got a gap in a date now. It's like, you know, you tell me, I make sure that it's a clear one, and then we have that to add a date. Again, these, we might be affecting students getting out of, getting out of that scenario as not that of a certain, and paper, and that is practice. And then, action three, I see, the people that got some of the group classes, so the confusion that look like GPAs, their state, and I think that is the system itself, that you're hiring identified as their state. It's similar that, they don't actually relate to their states and GPAs. And you guys, we know the idea is that it's agit from the absence of the founding act frame. And we realize that there's some clarifications that need to be made so that it's really clear to the state players exactly what we would use to calculate and rate courses. And, and again, through this process and through the questions that arise, if we eliminate, try to see the gas, and so we can go actually to a number of addresses to the few minor agents. So we will come back to board action, but are there questions that I can answer for you all about this process so far?
Ms. Gill?
Well, first, Madam Chair, first and foremost, I really want to commend you and Jersey for all the drive and your team's efforts related to this glorious process. And I suspect it is, as you said, third satisfactory, or satisfying, but also frustrating. Your life, whatever, I'm, I have locked in all the errors. But may I invite you to address what those things were on the transcript that weren't included?
Sure. An example is when a student trans, uh, each year, a student's school's name, address, phone number, fax, those are still used, and email are to be listed every year. And things like address and phone and email were not listed. So something as simple as that, if a student transferred in, which school they transferred in from. There are other examples are, we use, we are supposed to have a section to list credentials and achievements. So if a student has earned a CT, a career technical education credential, that should be, there should be a place to list that on their transcript. If a student is an early scholar, awardee, that should be listed on their transcript. GPA should be listed year to year as well as cumulative. So things like that.
So another example, editorialize a little. Again, we were shortchanging our students by failing to, in the past, acknowledge their accolades via their transcript at least.
At least via the transcript.
At least via the transcript.
Can you remind us what the dates that, sorry, that we have scheduled for the community to meetings in the high schools regarding the transcripts?
Yeah, so those are underway. Those began before the holiday break, and those are going on throughout this week, over the next two weeks. We can, I can definitely email those to you. We are doing robo calls to parents, apparently, for all those calls at each of those schools, and principals are advertising those as well.
Also, do we have it on your website, the dates of the meetings?
I know we were posting them on social media. I will double check to see if you have them on the website.
Thank you.
If I may add, I think one of the things that we've discussed is an engagement strategy after the transcripts come out, because I think that is going to be the true rubber meets the road moment when students and families will have a full and detailed understanding of what the changes actually were for them specifically. And so we're looking at what is the best way to be able to answer those questions. A large group setting is probably not the right way because these are personal, private discussions. And so we're thinking through how to utilize all the resources of the division to be able to answer those as efficiently as possible, in English and in Spanish, so that we can make sure that families and students are able to fully understand what those changes were.
Ms. Gurel?
I'd just like to know how our student thinks about the, if I may, Madam Chair. Regarding the, because you're a junior or senior?
I'm a senior.
Any thoughts regarding the transcript, what we're trying to do when, I think the move Armstrong is still, isn't it? I will bet it a gallon. Do you have any thoughts regarding the transcript? Are you all straight for the fall?
Yeah.
It's two-way. I heard it earlier. Any of your, your students at your school have any concerns that we may need to address? So we'll be ready for their, their questions.
I don't know too much students there, but the people that I hang around, they all got accepted into college, and so I'm pretty sure all their transcripts are pretty down-packed and they have all the right important information that they have on there. the right important, um, information that they have on there.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So we're doing the rules.
Deja, when I, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry.
Um, thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions, just to bring up some of the items for follow-ups from the original report. Um, could you speak, as we're talking about communication, I believe there was a request for a formal communication plan at some point this month. I just wanted to, um, hear status on that. And then also, the, um, uh, where's the technical center bus schedule? Um, can you talk a little bit about where we are with that and what that process will look like?
Okay. On the communication plan that's due at the end of this month, and as Mr. Cameron said, we are thinking through, we're still in the process of thinking through, once we know the student, the students who are affected, the best way to communicate that individually. We certainly think that starts at the counselor level and at the school level since those relationships are there, but wanting to figure out how to support them in having those one-on-one conversations. We have done the, um, we've been in progress of having to keep the school-wide meetings just to answer any questions. The, we'll also be sending again individual letters home to every student along with the revised transcript, again, indicating if it, whether if at all and how their, their credits were affected. Um, so those are the ideas and things we have either in play and in development, but there's still more, more work to be done. And I do think, um, once this all sort of is clear, the students, students will have questions and I'd like to figure out how to engage with students directly so they understand, um, sort of how this sort of thing happens and what it might mean for their confidence in coursework moving forward. So maybe not seniors, but others who, um, especially as they go on selecting courses in this spring. And then on the RTC bus schedule, um, I guess we share a little bit more about the question?
I believe in the report, the VEOE requires that the Richmond Technical Center bus schedules are fixed and that the new schedule is submitted to the Virginia Department of Education sometime in June.
Okay. So that was, we, um, we're looking at just, we will be, obviously as we prepare for next year, looking at all of our schedules to make sure similarly our bell schedules all line up and with RTC. I think there's confusion, um, about how students are able to earn credits based on the time, amount of time they are there. We've since explained those options and pathways to the DOE. So we believe that on paper, the bus schedule works. So now the work is to figure out what in reality, how are students really losing class time or not? Um, because we think we've developed a workable solution. So we're in the process of asking the principals at each school, our, how much does the what's on paper match the reality of the bus schedules? But if it does, and based on my conversation with the counselor and the principal at RTC, students are maximizing instructional time and it still allows them to take a full load.
Thank you. Ms. Dor.
So I'm getting some questions from parents at TJ specifically about the ID, which is very confusing. Um, and this whole thing is very confusing, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're, we're working on a communication plan and I think there's definitely, I'm feeling a lot of, I'm a little admittedly lost in all of it, so I can't imagine how parents are feeling. Um, but my specific question for tonight is how will classes that are ID be weighted before the 2018 and 2019 year?
Yep, and I can talk a little about that when we get to action three. Um, we are recommending, so the ID program, um, for secondary level, there are two programs, the middle years program and the diploma years program. The policy that you all-
I'm sorry, can you just clarify that middle years is actually sixth through?
Yes, so the middle years program is a sixth through tenth grade program and the diploma program is an eleventh and twelfth grade program. The diploma, the diploma program in and of itself by nature is, um, comparable to an AP program in that the curriculum is markedly defined, whereas NYPD, there is general guidance, but NYPD tends to be an approach rather than a sort of very dedicated curriculum. Um, the, so the DP program you all approved, uh, the policy you approved in August rightly weighted the diploma program, which is eleven and twelve graders, at the same weight as AP indoor enrollment. The middle years program, so if you're a TJ student, ninth and tenth grade, um, those courses should be weighted, we would say at an honors level. So, and what there is, the, the old policy did not note, make the distinction between NYPD or DP. And, and the revised policy, we did not denote NYPD. We did say DP, but we did not say anything about NYPD specifically. So that's one of the clarifications I'm asking for tonight is to clarify, and, and as far back as I can find from the program studies to fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen, the, it did notate that IB NYPD would be treated as honors and I believe that's appropriate. So in ninth and tenth grade, those courses retroactively and moving forward in the new policy would be weighted at honors. The question, um, the difference between the new policy and the previous policy is really at the middle school level in that the previous policy allowed for high school credit bearing courses, courses taken in middle school to count towards GPA weight. Our new policy explicitly excludes high school courses for credit taken in middle school to not be included in one's GPA weight. So we certainly are not going to retroactively change that. We are going to, we want to make the policy effective this current school year and in line with common practice, which is that GPA really starts at high school and doesn't sort of value in middle school. But for students who believe that their middle school courses would count, uh, weights would count for GPA, um, for the old policy, that would obviously carry through, um, up until this school year. I'm getting a little bit into the action, but I'm happy to talk more about it.
Go ahead.
This is regarding the middle school, uh, if you're taking high school credits in middle school and not counting towards your GPA. So can you, I'm sorry, reiterate the rationale behind that again, if that was because of the, they weren't, they weren't enough hours or something like that in the classes?
So, um, well, first, our, I would say that it's not incredibly common in the education space to have your middle school GPA carry over into your high school experience. So thinking as students generally want a fresh start and that you want to be comparing apples to apples. So the policy that we brought forth in August indicated that middle school courses, the credit transfers certainly, but that the GPA does, the weight does not, because if you have an unweighted GPA, it doesn't really carry over. It's not like your cumulative middle school, you generally don't start middle school with your cumulative, you don't start high school with your cumulative middle school GPA. So it, students who have no weighted courses come in with a zero, point zero, and students who have weighted courses come in with whatever that is. Um, if you happen to, if you took Algebra One in eighth grade and did well in it, that could benefit you if it was a weighted class. But if you weren't sure and you were sort of struggling with math, but you still wanted to challenge yourself and you struggled with a C, that might, you might not want that to carry over. So the idea is we don't want students sort of being risk averse at an exploratory time either. Um, that said, we would not be taking anything away from students. So we are honoring a practice that has not been codified, um, other than in the program studies, it's not been codified into, um, previous work. We would say we would honor all the way back. And so starting with this school year, we would put this new policy into place, which is when this, the new policy was put into effect. Does that make sense? So nobody would be losing anything retroactively.
Ms. Newell, Ms. Gibson?
Uh, another way of thinking about it, the risk of belaboring the point is like at Virginia State, we're not going to, if a student may transfer credits from a community college, GPA doesn't transfer. I mean, it's really the same to be, I would suggest, a comparable scenario. The, the credits transfer, but the GPA, they start with a zero point zero.
So I have a, uh, I guess perhaps a more philosophical point, um, that, and I'm wondering if you would prefer that I bring that up during the action item or, because it's specific to the policy, um, the weighted policy. I just feel this is like a, you know, it's more-
Yeah, I, I actually want to ask for guidance here. Um, this is a first read, so I'm not sure this has to wait until action or do you want to wait? We could, we could tackle this now or, go ahead.
So, first read, you think of the board. And so to your question, I think-
So I can, I guess I'll bring it up now. So I, so, um, as I was looking at the policy and trying to make sense of, you know, how it works, uh, I spent a little bit of time for, out of curiosity, looking at our, our neighboring school systems. And, um, you know, I'm a person that believes in, in, in local authority, but to be honest, this is one of those things that surprises me that there's not more regulation statewide level to ensure some type of consistency from, from district to district as it pertains to grading. And so one thing that I, I, if I understand, because if we think that our grading policy is complicated, then adding in the other districts to the mix takes it from, uh, you know, pre-algebra to, to calculus. Um, the, the observation that I, I've made is that it appears, and perhaps you have looked also, is that while, uh, students that are taking general education classes are at a four and then, you know, you could get up to a six, so it's like a two-point variance in GPA for those weighted, for those honors or advanced classes. In our neighboring, at the neighboring districts, it's typically perhaps, it's really not more than one point variance. Um, so, uh, you know, so, so, so I, I bring this up because as we've been talking so much about equity, um, I, I, I am curious or I, I wonder if it's worth considering the, the equity in, in terms of a system where, um, those students that are taking advanced classes are given such a, a weighted benefit, um, from a grading standpoint.
Um, Mr. Cameron and I have been having this exact conversation. Um, and, uh, I, I think it's worth looking into from an equity standpoint. I think, um, from, at the, at the most basic level, what we really have to do at first is just ask ourselves, are students who are taking different levels of courses truly getting a different curriculum experience? Um, and the state will be holding that to us in the future. Um, and there's a lot of variance across school, across the country in education about honors and how honors is distinct from right given courses. We know that AP dual enrollment and IB are uniquely distinct because of the curriculum and the externally validated assessments that exist to validate those. So I think the short answer is, um, I would welcome that conversation. I think it's a, um, complicated one, given different interests at stake, um, but I think it is one that I would certainly welcome as a goal of the board.
Thank you.
I have a question to Ms. Gibson for. I think it's a valid question because especially when you look at our students that apply to specialty schools, um, the government school, the classes, the courses, they're real, um, excuse me, if we, um, our students are enrolled in, you know, yeah, is it really having an impact or is it viewed differently from, I guess, an assessment from school district to school district? Um, because we know the reality, and I've heard people say, oh, you're in the RPS, so your rigor is not concerning. So my question is, I think that is worth looking into for kind of equity. It's true of that form.
Yeah, and the, the curriculum work that's outlined in our strategic plan is a part of ensuring that, that every family and student knows that every single day they go to school, they're getting exactly what they need. And I would also just say that this is not an RPS specific problem. This is unfortunately tragically a problem in, in many, many school systems and we just have, we have the opportunity to, we're willing to lift that up and shine a light on it and tackle it. Um, and so I also, there are, there are really incredible experiences that our students are getting and so I also want to make sure we're honoring that. Um, but then again, this is why our curriculum work and the strategic plan is so, so vital.
Thank you so much. I would have more of a statement. So, um, with the technical center, I'm glad you're addressing the bus schedule because we recognize all our students are not interested in attending college, um, more interested in vocational track, but because of bus schedule that's been complicated due to lack of bus drivers, because I've heard, I mean, my own children, um, they attended classes at the technical center and oftentimes had delays because of the bus schedule. So I'm, I'm glad we're looking at that. But my last question is to our student representative. Feedback from you as far as communication, transcript, what, what are your thoughts regarding the best means of communication for our students and for our families?
Well, the counselors could be in the office more as well because a lot of our, a lot of our seniors, um, when it comes to the getting accepted into colleges, I know for me, um, I've gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of colleges, but at the same time, it's not the feedback that I want to hear because I've been trying to send my, uh, transcripts to them and I'll get text messages, emails like, hey, we got your, uh, application, but we're still missing a couple of things. And me, I'm thinking, I've sent it to the school, so they can send it to y'all. So I don't even, I, I don't understand why they're not getting my, um, like the rest of, the rest of my, the main important things. And a lot of my peers at school, they're, they're just complaining about like, um, how the counselors aren't in their office when we really need to speak with them because they're in like meetings and everything. And although, I know that's important, but at least one counselor can stay back so therefore all of the students that need questions to be answered, they can be there to help them. Because I know today at school, when I went to go talk to my counselor, she was not there. She was in a meeting. So they can try to space out their meetings so they'll have time for the students so we can answer that question.
And also the best means of communication with students, what do you utilize? It's, well, Facebook because we want parents, students to be engaged in this process. Um, if you have questions, concerns, we want to make sure that the communication is clearly rolled out to our families.
Well, for me, I'm not a social media type person. I'm, I, I get on social media, but it's not like, oh, I'm always on my phone. But, um, for my peers, yeah, maybe Instagram and like Twitter or Snapchat and all that stuff. And, um, for parents, Facebook and email. And I know some of my peers check their email, uh, daily, so email mainly or Instagram.
You're going to hear Facebook is data. So, um, just to summarize, um, since this is not a formal action, we are bringing a first read to amend our board policy five dash six point three. And again, this is basically sources of confusion. This is an attempt to clarify and minimize sources of confusion as we go into the period where we will be calculating GPAs. And again, because there are essentially year over year, different rules and methods, we want to clarify- we want to clarify what those are. So we are submitting for first read edits that, with the following clarifications that we believe are necessary. The first is clarifying that this policy goes into effect in the 18, 19 school year and is not retroactively applied, so that the, let's say the, so that the middle school weighting would, would stay. Second is adding a clarification to School Board Member Doors' question that IB MYP courses taken in ninth and 10th grade receive honors levels weight, honors level weighting, which is consistent with the practice that was previously outlined in the program of studies, but has not been in any previous or current policy. I want to note the distinction here, because this policy excludes middle school courses feeding into the GPA. Middle school courses taken at the IB MYP program naturally would not qualify for weighting. And third is a quick clarification that weighted courses at the honors level will only apply to core content area courses, English, math, science, history or social science, and foreign language. And the reason for that is, there is not a curriculum difference in IDPE or PE honors and the like. And so, and further, we have significant curriculum work to do on our regular core curriculum, to make sure that in and of itself is robust and rigorous, and to ensure that if we are going to continue as a system with these multiple levels and distinctions, we need to make sure that's essentially three to four levels of curriculum that we have to get right. And we think it makes sense to focus that on the core content, so that if we are giving weighted GPA and distinctions, those are certainly, they're well outlined, and therefore, well-deserved and well-earned. And not that they haven't been, but we just want to clarify that. And so these are the clarifications we're bringing, and we'll be seeking second read and approval at the next board meeting.
So the clarity for the board, we only voting on, have two action items, action one and action two items, and then action three, which is first read. The board policy.
And just, just to clarify, action two only regarding the frank ones. We're deferring the discussion from Richmond. So it's basically 1A, 1B, and 2A, if that works.
So action two is frank.
Is frank.
You got it.
Action three.
Is first read. No, we're not doing anything to it either. Action three is about the weightings and other things we discussed. This is a first read, so in board docs is the actual red line version. We're not taking any action on that tonight, so that folks have a couple of weeks to absorb that, and we can have a full discussion on the 22nd to take action then.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to clarify, I do have three motions, and I have the specific motions when you get to that, I don't need just the board number.
The next item is item 6, budgetary items. Item 6, budgetary items, item 6.01, receive the financial statement for the period ended number 30, 2018.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to provide an overview of the Fund 100 revenues and expenditures as of the end of 2018. Three things really jump out here. Number one is that we're doing better when we compare to number 17 to number 18 in terms of our non-contracted employee spend. We're down about $200,000. That's pretty good. I'd also want to note that we recorded more of our revenue, when we counted the closing way, more than anything else. So last year, we had about 12.4% of our revenues in by the end of November, and this year, we're at close to 27%. One point of caution is that we continue to earn high-end transportation. As of the end of November, we expended about 33.7% of our budget, which is up from 31% last year. We're transporting more kids, we have a lot more private placements, and it is earning out of our budget pretty quickly. Hope you continue to monitor this, because it is very likely that towards the end of the fiscal year, we need to request an additional budget transfer to cover our transportation expenses.
If you don't have the doubt on this, that's all right. We can talk offline later, but you don't have to. You don't by any chance recollect what that transfer was last fiscal year, do you? Because we had to do, we had to do that last year, but does anybody remember what that number was?
I want to say it was 1.5 million.
Yeah, I think it was a big number, wasn't it? I mean, just to finish, at the risk of stating the obvious, I mean, absent some corrective change, if it was 1.5, then, yeah, we're, just trying to do the math in my head, perhaps on like 1.7 or something.
Ms. Gibson.
Peaking, piggybacking on my colleague's point, as we're moving into budget season, my hope is that we look at those structural deficiencies in our budget and make recommendations for increases to ensure that each line item covers the actual amount.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The next item is item 7, board action item 7.01, is to receive for action or resolution request of the use of city council chambers for the 2019 school board meetings. And this is something that we send out to council every year, and they will send us back dates that we can use council chambers, that resolution was posted on board docs. And I do have one date clarification. In June, we had the date listed as June 16, but it's June 17.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Send the motion to approve the resolution. I move that we approve the resolution.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Mr. Barlow to approve the resolution of the use of city council. Any discussion? Call the question.
The motion is made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Barlow. Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Mer?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Dole?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0. The next item is item 7.02, see for action or personnel action.
Good evening. You have the personnel actions in front of you, and there is one addendum. I know we're focused on not doing an addendum for today, which I have there for you, that we wanted to be able to get through for you to know. So in front of you, this evening, you'll see the nomination of 23 employees, the change of contract for 26 employees, the resignation of 13 employees, the return from leave of five employees, the furlough of 12 employees, the retirement of two employees, the reappointment of two employees, the rescission of one employee, the termination of two employees, the name change for six employees, and the unfortunate passing of one employee.
The motion, if you have any questions.
I put a clarification real quickly. Mr. Daz, did you say that there's a, is there a hard copy addendum? Is that right?
There is with one name on it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we accept these as approved, I mean, presented.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Mer to approve the personnel action. Any discussion? All the question?
Ms. Barlow?
The dates.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Mer?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Dole?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-1.
The next item is to receive for action requests related to the high school transcript update, and I do have those motions. With regard to action one, there are two. The first one is to retroactive, retroactively approve selected locally developed courses for the 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18 school years as outlined on slide 7, and additional courses outlined for the 17, 18 school year, 20th century history. For the 15, 16 through 17, 18 school years, allow middle school students to take for high school credit digital applications and technology foundations per VDOE requirements.
Like we give additional background briefly. So just to remind another lot with all of this, so because the state require, we as a school system are allowed to offer locally developed courses that have not been approved by the state. Each school board has to have a process for doing so, and Richmond does. That process needs to be reviewed, and I would literally bring some revisions to that to you all later this spring. But that process, as far as we can tell, and through looking through board docs and documentation, we cannot find any evidence that local courses were ever approved or ever followed through our process. Therefore, the state's ruling with the transcript audit was that we would have to rescind the credit for each of those local courses. Remember, we submitted a waiver, that waiver was denied, and so therefore, we would need to rescind all local courses because they were never approved. We put, we, we worked with the DOE to establish an agreement that they would allow retroactive board approval back to the 15, 16 school year if we could provide certain documentation. And that documentation, there were two criteria that we had to provide. The first is we needed some sort of original course documentation that includes a description and outlines with a fair amount of clarity the specific content and material to be learned. This might be a syllabus, a curriculum, a pacing guide, et cetera. The Attorney General also required that that documentation, that we only allow that documentation to be applied for the specific school year for which it was dated. So for example, I would have to have a very detailed syllabi that outlines the units or subjects of study alongside a specific date, and I would need one of those for each year that we were seeking to keep that credit. We spent, you know, over a month gathering this documentation from our staff internally, and also put the list out to staff before the holiday, I mean, to the public before the holiday, and encourage students and families as well to submit documentation. So the courses that we are bringing to you for retroactive approval tonight are those courses for which we have met both of those criteria. So I will be, in full candor, there were, I had documentation that had sufficient levels of detail for content that would satisfy both our requirement and the state's requirement, but did not have a date. Or I would have documentation that had a date, but was a syllabus with hardly more than sort of procedural rules and assignments, general assignments and grading policies. So I could not use that to justify bringing the local course for retroactive approval. So for example, this graphic might help. So these are the courses that met that minimum bar, and you'll see, or there are three school years, so in each column, if you start on the left here, with advanced biology lab, we have sufficient, sufficient documentation with the state to allow those courses if they were offered alongside an advanced course. So there are certain business rules with some of these that are agreed upon with the DOE. So I have that for all three of those years, which is why you see yes, yes, yes. If you compare that to sociology, you'll see that for one year, for 15, 16, I have documentation, but it doesn't have a date. So I have nothing that says 15, 16, so I cannot, per the Attorney General's ruling, bring that to you for local approval. I have it for 16, 17. For 17, 18, I have a syllabus, but it doesn't have enough content to give you an idea of the course, okay? So those are the courses that we are bringing, and over the last three years, not counting the school year, the previous three school years, there were about 61 local course offerings found within our system. So whether those were all taken during those three years, we do not have a final on that because we're going by and by line, but these certainly were in our system, and some of these certainly showed up on transcripts. So, but for all of that, these are the courses for which sufficient documentation can be found. Now, some of that master list are things that were really only ever designed for a certain subset of students, perhaps students with a modified curriculum due to an IEP or things like that. So these are the courses we're bringing to you. In addition, the motion names three, we have four additional courses that today we were able to gather documentation on. 20th century history is being added to this list for 17, 18. And then there are two CTE courses that are allowable, they were offered in eighth grade, but in order to be offered in eighth grade, the board has to approve them. They are state courses. Yes, all these details. So digital applications, which was formerly computer applications, and technology foundations were asking for you to authorize those to be offered in middle school retroactively. And then the final course, and Ms. Wilson, this will be added to the motion, would be psychology, offered in 17, 18, and 18, 19. So we are separating the past three years, and then the next action is for current school year. We removed in August, when this was happening with the state, we quickly moved to remove with our counselors in high schools as many local courses as we could, and we only allowed those on there for which we had confidence that we could have codified curriculum. So there are no local courses being taken in 18, 19 that would be removed. But we do, we do need to get approval for those because that approval, the process for our board is rather lengthy, and that was not done prior, when the program study was outlined in, in the spring. So let me pause there and see if that makes sense.
Could you or perhaps our legal counsel speak a little bit to the current process for local board approval on classes?
Okay, so yeah, don't quote me exactly on this, but it involves a local curriculum committee that meets over the several meetings, and we bring that to you. And I'm not saying we shouldn't follow that exactly, that some part of a committee, but I would like to, I would like the opportunity to bring you all our recommended revisions based on best practice, and also anticipation. We don't anticipate bringing a large amount of local courses to the slate in 1920, given the amount of work we need to do with our curriculum.
My only question really is, if these are for credit approval, but the two freshman orientation are non-credit bearing, so we're not really approving them for credit, right? We're just approving the fact that they took them?
That's right, so they're taken on their transcript.
Okay, but they don't get credit for them? Okay.
Ms. Cosby?
I just, it's not quite what we're talking about here, but on page thirteen, so there are approximately forty classes that are not going to be submitted or retroactive approval. Do you have any idea of how many students, how many students took this?
So not yet, but we will. So as we complete each class, we will have, so at the end of this month, I will be able to tell you that for seniors. At the end of the following month, I will be able to tell you that for juniors. And the reason for that is it seems like you should be able to just run a basic report and cross-reference. But we've looked at that and do not want to err on producing inaccurate information. And so by doing the student by student transcript review and tracking each one individually, it will allow us to bring you complete accurate data at the end of each class. So when we do updates, I can update you with hard numbers starting in February. I think the list is, can feel overwhelming. And I think any one credit for one student is significant. But I think, and having looked at the senior transcripts, there's certainly cases where courses are more common and where courses are rare, if almost nonexistent.
Yeah, Felicia's question was not unlike mine, but the forty classes that she referenced on this page thirteen pendent, have we exhausted our pursuit of the documentation? We're pretty confident it's not out there, or are we still looking for documentation?
At this point, we have concluded our search for that. However, Mr. Pammers and I discussed the possibility of, now that this is here and more real, I suppose, leaving that window open until later this week for the chance to bring any kind of round two, but then to close that window at the end of the month.
Just for clarity's sake, Wednesday at 5:00 PM would really be the deadline because we have to do a certain amount of work to prepare the running of the transcripts. So we can't let this go too much further. But given that, obviously, the press coverage this evening will help us get the word out, thank you media. We wanted to extend this by a couple of days. So please, if you have anything else, remember it has to have a date, and it has to robustly demonstrate what the course is about. And again, I just want to remind everyone, nothing new can be created. This must be existing materials. And the, you can drop that off at the seventeenth floor or email it to?
Transcripts@rpschools.net.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Doyle?
So for these classes where credit will be rescinded, if the proper documentation is submitted in the future, can these classes be added, or are they just forever gone?
I think this is a special dispensation for the state, so they're forever gone. So I ask, I'll reverse it. We, the instruction and the mandate is to rescind all local credits, all local courses. We are submitting for retroactive approval a subset so that we do not have to rescind. So the default is to rescind, and we're trying our best to retain as many of those as we can, based on proper documentation.
Hi, thank you. So I just wanted to note that at this time, I plan to abstain from this action. And if the motion is brought, then my abstention, I would like to, the record to note that I am abstaining simply because of the amount of documentation. I would hope to see, you know, the school, that the courses were held and some information about the curriculum as we would be required to do as part of our standard process. If we are, do not, and that, you know, documentation was provided, I would be, you know, I would be in support.
Happy to share with you all of that for your review. I have lots on my Google Drive.
Yes, I am prepared, trying to figure out which one this is. We are. Oh, okay.
I think one other clarification that feels very important. Approval today does not equate future approval, nor inclusion in RPS's future course offerings. The nineteen twenty school year approval will happen formally through our submission of a program of studies. I, there, so I need to be really clear. I would not want people here to convey approval for nineteen twenty. The courses that we bring you will have gone through the right level of development before we bring any local courses to you. So this is retroactive, and this is just to help students retain the credits for which you're able to provide documentation.
And so the motion is to retroactively approve selected locally developed courses for the fifteen sixteen, sixteen seventeen, and seventeen eighteen school years as outlined on Slide Seven, and additional courses outlined for the seventeen eighteen school year, twentieth century history. For the fifteen sixteen through seventeen eighteen school years, allow middle school students to take for high school credit digital applications and technology foundations per VDOE requirements. And for seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen school year, Psychology.
So the motion has been made by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Doyle. Any discussion? Ms. Burke?
So, Ms. Wilson, can you drive the board?
Oh, the process, the question was, I was just going to verify. You said no quote, but you can't quote our policy. The process was what it was. For the moving forward in the approval of new courses, requires, per the policy, of course, the subject revision, the task, currently tasked for some of them reviewing any submissions and then reviewing the identity, their application of the board.
Thank you.
So a question. So a timeline will be brought back to the board as far as this process for approval? And when do you anticipate it?
We anticipate our draft of the program of studies to be done, to be brought to you by the end of February.
Oh, okay. And this would be for?
Nineteen twenty.
The motion was made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstained.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one. The next motion for Action One is to approve local courses for the current school year, eighteen nineteen, as outlined on Slide Eight.
Do you need a motion?
I so move.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke. Any discussion?
The only thing I would like to add is there are some things on here that really do look to me like they might be considered for classes moving forward. I was kind of surprised that creative writing, for example, African-American Studies, might not be things this day already knows we need to be offering. So I would just say that. It's interesting to me about journalism, because when I took journalism at TJ, we won't talk about exactly when, it was my English eleven class. It was a combined class. So I don't know if that's a possibility that some schools might want to consider expanding English eleven, or because Betsy Carr and I were head of the school newspaper at TJ in those days. And so maybe there are possibilities for it. Thank you.
Would you like a quick response to that? So African-American Studies is actually quite well-developed, and it's a course that I would likely bring to this board because the curriculum is very developed. Creative writing, despite its widespread use and passion, is not a course for which I've been able to find detailed outline of content and curricula. So if someone wants to take that on and write that curricula, basically, by all means.
Again, the motion was made by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke. Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstained.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Berg?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one. And the next motion is under Action Two, and it is to formally add the graduation requirement that every student applying to military take a military course each year effective for the current ninth through twelve graders and all future incoming ninth graders.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Barlow and seconded by Mr. Young. Any discussion? Call the questions.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Look forward to a properly approved program of studies for nineteen twenty.
Good job.
The next item, the agenda was amended to move item eight point two into action items. So the next item is seven point zero four, received for action in the two thousand and nineteen Lincoln Public Schools Legislative Agenda. Is this in addition to what's on board? This is what's on board.
They have all of it, they have the toolkit as well.
Oh, it's in first. Like all of these, you saw them, right?
Yes.
And everything's on board docs. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent Camerons, school board members. Everything's on board docs, but we just wanted to give you hard copies as well of the PowerPoint, the legislative agenda, and all the toolkit items. So that's why it's a heavy packet. This fall, RPS in the City launched our advocacy campaign, More Better Stronger, more money for better schools and stronger students. This campaign is the campaign we're using as a tool to build public awareness and engage our community to be advocates for better public education, to support our students and the RPS strategic plan. Now, the first major initiative was mobilizing our community through a march. We held the March for More on December eighth. We had over a thousand participants, including participants from other localities across the state. Now, this historic march demonstrated that there was a statewide coalition ready to advocate for more. Since then, we have been steadily preparing for the upcoming regular session of the General Assembly. Tonight, we would like to review and ask for approval of your legislative agenda. We've emailed this to you a couple times for your review and feedback. And we also are going to tell you a little bit more information about our engagement plans to garner public support for our efforts. So first, we developed this legislative agenda off of several factors. One of the most important factors is our RPS strategic plan, Dreams for RPS. And you'll see the goal that we really pull from, Goal Ten, Goal One, as well as Goal Six. But we've also ensured that we are aligned with other partner organizations, including the Virginia Association of Superintendents, the Virginia School Board Association, and others. So as we proceed through these presentations, I'm going to highlight the items, but know that the legislative agenda goes into much more detail with the strategic alignment. So Item One, this first item carries a large and significant impact. In two thousand and sixteen, the Board of Education reviewed state funding and recommended several changes to the Commonwealth Standards of Quality statutes. Now, the most critical component of these changes is eliminating the support position gap that the General Assembly enacted in two thousand and nine that limits the number of support positions that the Commonwealth will fund. Removing this cap will provide state funding for many support physicians that RPS currently must fund with a hundred percent of its local funds. So additional policy changes you'll see deal with the ratios of different employees to students. We'll talk about school counselors a little later, but as we heard today, the priority of nurses as well, which is one of our strategic plans. Item Two talks about the at-risk add-on. Now, we know this is a critical funding stream for RPS. We do qualify for a higher percentage of these funds than most other localities. Therefore, any increase appropriation strongly benefits RPS. Now, the governor has proposed increasing this funding, and we will be advocating to protect that funding, which would increase the percent range from up to sixteen from fourteen percent. Now, we recommend advocating for a higher percentage as it costs divisions like Richmond twenty-five to thirty percent more to educate students in high-quality localities. Item Three, this is a smaller item, but nonetheless important. It enables to keep smaller class sizes in our elementary classrooms. We would like to offer a budget amendment to change the way this is funded and provide supplemental income based on our actual per-people cost rather than based on the state average, which is much lower. This is a difference of a hundred dollars, of several hundred dollars per student. Item Three talks about our compensation, recruitment, and recognition. So maintaining and recruiting high-quality teachers, we know how critical this is. There are many state funding policies that affect teacher compensation, but of course, the most direct impact is teacher salaries. Virginia lacks below much of the rest of the nation in average teacher salaries. We know since two thousand and nine, the legislature has done very little to grow them. Already included in FY twenty budget is a three percent increase, and the governor has proposed an additional two percent for a total of five percent. We will be advocating to implement the governor's proposal. Additionally, there are three existing programs that we want to target for continued and increased funding. They are the Master Teacher Residency Program, the STEM Teacher Incentive Program, and the Virginia Teacher Scholarship Loan Program. These programs all help to put more teachers in high district needs like Richmond. Another program proposed by the Virginia Municipal League is a Teacher Psychin' Program, and this will support classroom and instructional needs for our teachers. And then lastly, the governor has proposed two additional new teacher programs that we want to support. The Grow Your Own Teacher Pilot provides scholarships for high school grads who commit to becoming a teacher and teaching in the district they graduated from. And then the other program would support minority teachers seeking full licensure through subsidized testing fees and support for tournery. Item Five, a major funding stream for public education is the proceeds from the Virginia Lottery. Unfortunately, over the years, lottery funds have been taking the place of general fund appropriation, leaving less behind for schools. appropriation, leaving less behind for school construction and other reoccurring capital costs. The governor has proposed some changes to this budget area, including a greater per pupil allocation, but the Commonwealth needs to do more to assist localities like ourselves with school construction and modernization. We plan to explore several options that would increase the amount of funding distributed for these purposes, some of which are listed. Item six, study the funding of the true cost of education and the SBI reform. So localities currently spend more than the required local effort on public education spending, approximately about $3.5 billion statewide. The state should be contributing 55% to localities' education costs, but it is currently contributing about 45%. We would like the General Assembly to study these numbers in more detail and account for the actual cost that localities incur beyond what is required by state law. And additionally, the local composite index is a factor here that we believe is unfairly impacting Richmond. Because of the potential for negative impacts on a number of localities from changes in this formula, it is likely to be a difficult and complex discussion, but we believe that equity is necessary and would like to ask the General Assembly to study this in more Item seven, our strategic plan specifically calls for us to request funding for a pilot program to expand preschool access to three-year-olds. We would also like to request the ability to enroll students from higher-income families using fee-based access. This will provide additional income to offset other costs and also diversify our early education classrooms. We also believe that the current per pupil allocation is too low, and are requesting an increase in the annual per pupil amount. Our team is working to understand our barriers to full VPI participation so that we can maximize enrollment in early education programs. Item eight, we feel it's important to be included in our agenda, alternative school funding. This has been a topic that the General Assembly has been discussing in recent years, and we want to plan to work with legislators to see what options could be available to really support and reimagine alternative education programs. Item nine, this is a huge focus for the General Assembly and session will be school safety and security. This past year, two different bodies have formulated recommendations in this area, the Virginia Children's Cabinet and the House Select Committee on School Safety. There were a total of 27 combined recommendations. The most high-impact areas that we are asking the General Assembly to address are as follows. One, which we heard Deja mention, are school counselors. Many are discussing this policy change. We would fund school counselors at a lower ratio. The governor has proposed a several-year phase-in to lower the ratio to 1 to 250. We will also be looking at the responsibilities of counselors to ensure that their time and job descriptions are focused on student services rather than administrative or other functions like testing administration. Trauma-informed care you'll see here. We need to renew our commitment to providing trauma-informed training for all of our educators so they can be even more skilled at supporting our students who face toxic stress in their lives as a result of violence or abuse. We will support the school safety recommendations in this area and ask for greater resources for training and better care for our students. School resources officers, we support increased state funding of these positions, but also know that these are positions that need to be trained very well. School security equipment, our schools need the best security technology and infrastructure to keep our physical building secure and students monitored and protected. We support the governor's proposal to increase the cap on these grants and ask that the legislature for greater appropriations to bring all of our schools up to date. And then lastly, this one speaks to a support for the payment of in lieu taxes. The payment, the payment in lieu of taxes is provided to Richmond to account for all of the non-taxable property in the city owned by the Commonwealth. A greater state appropriation would provide more resources to the city to then allocate, hopefully easing other budgetary pressures and allowing a greater local appropriation to RPS. I know that was a lot. We have a comprehensive legislative agenda. I'm going to open up for questions, but first, I want to talk about how we're going to be advocating most for the policies that can carry the greatest fiscal impact to RPS. We have an ambitious strategic plan, and we know the need is greater overall appropriations to public education. More, better, stronger. To help us energize and empower our community, we have created an advocacy and engagement plan, which you have. Our plan includes an advocacy toolkit, plans for lobby days, legislative meetings, and advocacy trainings for our community. The advocacy toolkit contains multiple components, including an advocacy guide, which educates our community on how to effectively advocate for public policy. We encourage teachers and others to use this work with their students, empower them to speak out. And then this week, as well as next week, Matthew, myself, we will be conducting advocacy trainings for our parents. We're training our parent advisory council and using this toolkit, and we hope that you will share these trainings. They're all posted online and on our Facebook page. And then lastly, we need all of you. So there will be many opportunities for school board engagement. Before the end of the year, I sent everyone a quick Google survey to get your interest and availability for talking with individual legislators during sessions. If you haven't filled this out, we'll send it again. Please complete this survey as soon as you can, and then Matthew will be reaching out to set up meetings with our legislators. Later this month, we're also preparing a legislative breakfast, so save the date, January 25th. We will be sending out an invitation shortly. We will be inviting all of our legislators to a breakfast to meet with our board chiefs and members of RPS. And then the final date that we need you is January 28th. This is the big education lobby day of session, which will be highlighted by the march from Monroe Park to the Capitol. It is organized primarily by Virginia Educators United, Virginia PTA, and the Virginia Education Association, but we need everyone to come and show their support on January 28th. And then lastly, I've just included some key dates up here for you to remember about legislative session. You'll note that the House and the Senate released their budget on February 3rd. Once we review those budgets, we will have a better idea of what the General Assembly is thinking in terms of advances for education funding. We expect to have a final budget near the end of February. So again, we need your engagement, but we feel we put together a detailed community engagement plan and agenda, and at this time, we'll take any questions and feedback.
Dr. Harris, thank you so much. I hope there's not a test later. I wanted to just clarify for the record, and we will be sending out a communication on this this week. But no teachers or other staff will need to take a leave day to participate on January 28th. Quite contrary, we are welcoming and encouraging staff to participate and are even organizing bus service to facilitate that. And we're asking staff to report to school as normal for some early PD in the morning, but then folks will be free to either participate if they wish or to continue with self-directed PD at their buildings. But I've received a couple of questions about that, and I want to clarify again, no teachers will need to take leave to participate that day.
Ms. Gibson?
So I, essentially, I would like to motion to approve the legislative agenda with the modification that we also would include the priorities from last year's legislative agenda that are still applicable in this session. The, just along that line, one of the other questions is, so, you know, as bills are coming in, I just want to make sure that we feel that our positions have covered the basis. You know, I know many of our positions are specific to our strategic plan, but things will come up. I'll write it down.
We hope you keep the board updated throughout session.
Ms. Berg? Ms. Young? So we're still in the discussion, and I should have. Well, probably. Thank you so much. This is excellent. This past week, I was in a meeting with several legislators because of the election years 2019, which you all know. And it was stated as a suggestion, because everything you mentioned here, along with our education during your audit, we know this is a part of the governor's agenda as well, along with the preschool program. And I'm very pleased about the persons being able to pay. If, because we lose a lot of our children born in private schools elsewhere because of not being able to be accepted into the preschool program, which years ago, when I taught that program, anybody could go. You just applied and you got in. You just registered, I should say. But one thing that was mentioned by one of the senior senators is that this is not a one-time situation, that if we want this educational piece to be pushed, we must, I would have to have workshops set up because it needs to be monitored. It needs to be something, it needs to be in someone's, not just during the General Assembly, but when they're not in session as well. We just need to be, just, just to say this appropriately well. We need to be front and center with those persons that are making decisions for us. And at some point also, it goes beyond just hearing, you said originally you mentioned that, but as we well know, most of the votes for our area carry in North Virginia, not in Southwest Virginia or whatever else. Just think, if we ever get, where we get to the point, and we connect with others who are struggling as we are, we can make that big difference. But right now, we travel nine to five on the march to DC. We're all positive. So I commend all what you have done. It's well done, very much in detail. We just need to do it. So thank you all so much.
Like Cheryl commenced today, Matt, on a job well done, I, in full disclosure, I'm going to vote no for reasons probably all my colleagues appreciate and understand, along with all my constituents. But my colleague to my immediate right, I, this pertains to dollars and cents. And Matt and I, we've had an opportunity to converse about this. I do look forward to, like Kenya said, addressing, for example, the legislature's appetite for imposing more unfunded mandates on us. And if it's consensus, if it's the group's consensus to opposing said mandates, I look forward to, again, if it's the group's consensus, to champion teacher autonomy and/or any opportunities to push back on legislature's incessant efforts to micromanage teachers. And I could identify any number of other things. What I'm really trying to say is, I think, kind of akin to what Kenya referenced a moment ago, dollars and cents, obviously invaluable, but some of those policies or decisions that speak to other kind of values, I look forward to weighing in between now and the end of legislative session.
I have a comment, again, just to echo, same sentence. May you, may both of you, for this well, for our plan, and I'm in agreement with what Ms. Stevenson said about previous legislative positions, in particular, the salary increase for teachers, because I know it was in confusion last year, and I know that will have a carry impact. Is we address that, correct that, or? Ms. Cosby?
Yes. To back to the motion. Are you ready to move to the discussion?
The motion, Madam Stevenson, was to approve, propose 2000, I'm sorry, 2019 legislative plan and also follow those positions from 2018 legislative priorities that are still applicable, you need to check.
It was moved by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Cosby. Any discussion? Ms. Cosby?
I too echo what my colleague said. We stated a very well-done advocacy plan. I do have a couple of questions because we do state on the draft legislative agenda that there are things that we would recommend in the positions. So initiate or support. So we have approximately five or so that we will initiate or introduce or initiate or support. So have we already, I mean, because people are, they're filing right now, that you have a deadline, so of any of these, which ones have we specifically gone to our Richmond delegation that, hey, can you carry this? Or have they carried them, which is saying we're going to support? Because it's been due slash support, so I get that. Anything that's very specific to RPS, to that, our Richmond delegation?
Yes, we've had ongoing communication and meetings with our Richmond delegation. I'm going to let Matthew specifically share the details of those moves.
The primary deadline for introduction of bills, that actually happened in December, so we are well past that, and the legislative agenda that you have currently, you're primarily focused on financing budget items. The deadline for budget amendments is on Friday, and so I'll be working with the Richmond delegation in the course of the week. I've been working with Laura Bateman, one of the city's lobbyists, and we've had ongoing discussion about what the different members of the delegation are already prepared to carry. So a lot of these things that you do see in your agenda are already on the minds of legislators, and we just have to formalize it by getting the budget request in ready. Yeah, we've met with a number of legislators already, Senator McCall and delegate Lauren, several of the other ones, there's a few outstanding that I'll be getting to in the coming days.
So which ones can we, are we willing to, like, for example, the At-Risk Add-on? In the last year, we had a couple of, this is legislation that had a couple of delegates and senators to, and different levels of funding for that. So do we know, or could we give the information, hey, we know, born, like last year, we did something specifically for preschool? We know that, so if you want to reintroduce it, you can just give that type of information. What has already been submitted?
Nothing has been submitted as of today by myself. Now, I mean, all these.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
Let me just clarify. What's our, what education deals have already, yeah, have already been submitted by our Richmond delegates or by anyone in the general position this summer? What's already been?
There are a number of bills that have already been filed that are in education for the Commonwealth, not Paris tonight, so I'll pull everything on that.
Right, right.
But by the way, being on, we're.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, absolutely.
Right. So just to the comments that, so I was at another community meeting and spoke on the same, some of the topics, topics about advocacy and shared with them the march on the 28th and the carrying that committee delegation to support RPS and join us in our efforts. And we had our Richmond delegation in attendance at the meeting, Senator McCullough, Senator Vance, Governor Warren, Governor Bagby, and Governor Warren did speak on the educational deals that will be in Patreon, and then also, in particular, you know, never supports RPS. And we recognize it's not a Richmond issue or a state-wide issue, but, and they also stressed the point that this must be an ongoing effort, not just today, tomorrow, January 28th, but ongoing throughout the year.
So we can get that information, Ms. Cosby, and put it together. So we can get that information, Ms. Cosby can put together and update it.
Though, right, and I also, if you don't mind, just to, when it comes to the legislative item for, talking about support teacher compensation, prison and recognition, and full support of, of course, increasing funding for master teacher residency programs, but also would like to think a little bit more broadly, when we talk about growing our own, it's not quite what, it's not quite the grow your own teacher problem that's been put forth by, I think it was Delegate Pisa, I'm not sure if I can pronounce that name, but would like to, in our position, just support broadly efforts to help us to create our own programming, whether we do something like grow your own teacher in this field, or something that would be more along the lines of, let's say you have New York Teacher Fellowship Program, but it's very specific to the needs of the New York City Public Education System. It's not, so it's just, the latitude, the ability to think a little bit broadly, and not just with the VCU Teacher Residency Program, but if we want to partner with other institutions, and to create our own program, and this, you know, we do have some specific needs, and we know that there's certain things that we, that we need, and that we are looking for. So that's one. And then, second, the teacher stipend program, and we say in high poverty schools, and I think for us, not just high poverty schools, but just the majority of our state would consider high poverty schools, and, but to me, also priority schools. So we have, we have 19 priority schools, and that, it would be nice to have additional stipends for teachers to leave their schools, to help meet the needs. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you very well done. Oh, my third thing, and then I'm going to quiet this. I love the advocacy guide, and thank you for the tips on the editorial, I'm reading that. But as we get into the session, if we even have form letters that people can click, you just send it as a link, it's there, so people don't have to necessarily write their own on it. But there is a form letter to click, you send it, and it goes to however many delegates and senators we want them, we want it to go to. And it could be for various pieces of research.
And one more question. What would be the frequency of updates to the board, and regarding different events? You know, things that we, as a board, what we have to do, and just updates, and what would be the frequency?
In terms of like during session? Yes. So we would continue our regular communication of emails, so prior to session, we've tried to consolidate like all the reporting dates, so we can get that to you ahead of time. The Google survey where we asked, do you have any relationships with existing legislators? And we ask people for general blocks of time, so that way, as I understand it, we're not really able to tie down the meeting dates, so kind of like write beforehand, so it's a little nebulous, but if we have those general blocks, then we'll probably be communicating based on the information you gave us, daily by either, you can let me know, I know some people prefer text, email, or phone call by myself or Matthew to let you know we have an opening, but that Google information survey will be really important. But we will make sure, like hopefully this is helpful, where we can give you all the reporting dates ahead of time, and then based on what you provide us, we'll follow up.
Ms. Cosby?
Sure.
Mr. Valdo?
Thank you. It's definitely tough for me to see when, I just know if you can see, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And the first being that I really appreciate the work from our parish and community family who put this plan together. Having gone through this process last year, I know that it's a lot of work and our efforts to work about and collaborate with the city. We're grateful, so thank you for that. And I also, in particular, wanted to commend them on the community outreach portion of this. That was something that I know that we had discussed last year, and that's something that we hold in more actively, so I think that's a strong start for it.
Hard question?
The motion was made by Miss Gibson, seconded by Ms. Cosby, to approve and propose 2019 legislative plan, and also follow those positions from our 2018 legislative priorities that are still applicable. Mr. Valdo?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
So Mr. Valdo? Mr. Valdo?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Is this your time? Because I know you're having difficulties hearing.
If you're voting on the district funding request, I'd be sitting around for that for the length of the process, head off before the session.
Okay. Ms. Gibson?
I also wanted to note that I just noticed that new business is not on our current agenda, and I was hoping we had that as well.
So is this a little of a void to add new business to the agenda?
Yes.
Next item?
The next item is, item eight, your consent agenda eight point zero ones to receive for actionable travel and district activity requests, and I have a few this evening. Mrs. Door is requesting $1,000 to go to the Albert Hill PTA to support teacher requests related to a science lab. Mrs. Berg is requesting $245 to attend to meet Virginia School Boards Association Capitol Conference, January 14th through 15th. And Mrs. Berg also has some contributions she would like to give to her schools. She would like to give $300 to the following schools, Armstrong, Bellevue, Chaminalazo, Fairfield, Franklin, George Mason, and Woodville. And she would also like to give $240 to Wink Management Services to provide 80 tickets for Eastern students to participate, and all of these will address the priority three of the Dream for RPS Initiative. Her total, anticipated expenses are $2,585, and Ms. Door's total is $1,000.
Still moved? Second?
Second.
Is it moved by Ms. Owen, and seconded by Ms. Cosby? Any discussion? Hard question?
Mr. Valdo?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
I'm staying.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Berg?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one. But the next item is new business?
Ms. Gibson? Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to hand out some items regarding the governance, so I'm just going to pass them down. I have been having some one-on-one conversations with my colleagues in the fourth, fifth, and sixth district, and we've been talking about how we work, and thinking a bit about some process opportunities to, to, to improve the way that we work. Timing seems good, given our upcoming governance meeting, and certainly new leadership. My hope is that we agree to develop a, an ad hoc committee to, to review and consider other, other items that we would then translate into policy updates or, or process revisions as fit.
Okay, thank you. And, and this is the first time that we have received this information. We can provide feedback? With the reasonable expectation that we can provide feedback, or the direction of the board?
And just for the sake of the audience, who does not, you know, they don't have to hand out, some of the items are regarding how we work with the memorandum of understanding in terms of setting up meetings and communicating what the, the updates are. The approval process, as I've said, I've noted several times about documentation, and so what type of documentation should we get, and what would be the appropriate timing for it? With the budget transfer, recent budget transfer, you know, I noted that we received more information for that small budget transfer than we received for that very large budget transfer, and I think that would be a pretty straightforward item to consider in terms of putting together agendas for our ongoing meetings. There've been some, I've seen online, lots of requests to livestream our meetings. I am thankful, I think people were excited to see that we would be doing more meetings in our, in city council chambers. The other consideration would be doing them in our schools, to allow more school participation, perhaps, how we put together facilities, because it does seem to vary in terms of like the facilities task force at one process. We didn't really have a formal conversation on how that could maybe be put together relative to the shaft, for instance. So the zoning is on it, so that, so that would become codified as being an ongoing thing that happens, perhaps with our order request, just simply documenting, you know, what the costs are when those requests come in. And ongoing collaboration with city council, I, and this is more on my end, I, it's very hard to keep up, I'm just wondering, you know, what we could do just to stay more abreast, and this may be something that's already happened, and I don't forget it, but like, you know, they have those stuff meetings, and then, like, people are having someone say, they have those stuff meetings, and people go back, so that's the long term of life. So thank you for this documentation, and because this is the first time that we have been seeing this document, and for a public company, for it to be the board members to do that, and to then to upload it to board about. And this is the first time, unless they before, first time to see this document. And still in this book?
I really appreciate this, I think it began to, that's a nice matter, piece of feedback that we all had, and I, I got it out of the presentation this time, I got a Patreon meeting in our, our tree, and I add that potentially there's a good government side, I mean, I've seen that before, and I know it's kind of, I know it's a little bit, I know it's a little bit, to make sense, we can, I have, I have my, I have my, I have my presentation, that's exactly the way that I think I do that.
Yes, this is the committee, and this, and certainly, I'm not clear on, I understand that, because certainly, I didn't know that the committee, let's get on, and you said, that, 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 is what I think.
Sure, so I hope is that, I think we should have, we should have that, that was a, that was a, and, and, and I hope is that we could have a, an ad hoc, it could be a short-term, that would put together, and some, some declarations, and these are, and took some initial ideas to consideration. So, besides, I, I just wanted to, I think this is, I do think this is a good, that we're starting, I think at this time, since we're not going to have any governance timing, and especially like, yes, policies, and those that I've had inside, and I don't like those, but, you just not really, um, um, not a chance to create the policies, um, for that, for the issues, so that is, you know, the politics, and the, and that, and I do that, and I have this discussion, and I hope I will try to be, I do.
So, um, the, the rest of that, the rest of that, or, or, I think it's great to have the list, though, I just try to, because I mean, I have some down there, that's, that's not, I mean, just, you know, everybody, to, 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 and, and, and so, what's the procedure moving forward? Because, I mean, I know, you know, it's something that we have to, so, I'm just being a, 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 so, it's, it's more and slower, and, and, this is the first time that, um, we have seen this document, so, and, with that. So, um, but I think that, since maybe by, the 18th, and then the population, or, our government's name, and I totally agree that some things on here are in place, um, some things, there's always going to be improvement, and it's something that I, I know, I know, like, frequently, our professional development with the Virginia School Board Association, so, um, there are definitely more items to add to this, and also to keep in mind, that we do have goals set in place throughout our teaching plan, but, yes, there may be the opportunity for the board to highlight more of that. So, the board members can provide feedback by the 18th of January, that would, that would be appreciated.
To the clerk.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item is closed.
For switching to session, we're turning the three thousand one, one, eight, one, and I go to quarters, and you have, you have, this was a favor, this is being closed session.
Board members?
Board members, we need votes to go to close.
Eighteen, nineteen, that, twelve, nineteen, that, thirteen, and eighteen, nineteen, that, fourteen, and Linda?
Linda?
Considered admission?
Just right here.
Of any other matter that would involve this motion, or application containing this plastic record, sharing the vision of the school student.
yes, there may, um, be opportunity for the board to highlight, um, more of that. So, the board members can provide feedback by the 18th of January, that would, that would be appreciated. To the clerk.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item is closed.
Pursuit session, turn that three seven one one eight one, and go to quarter Virginia, and, yeah, all the time, with the, with the, with the, and being closed.
Board members?
Board members. We need votes to go in close.
That's dramatic, throwing ballots. Eighteen nineteen dash twelve, nineteen nineteen dash thirteen, and eighteen nineteen dash fourteen. And, Linda? Considered admission.
Who just right here?
Of any other matter that would involve a disloyal application pertaining to soliciting records, sharing the vision of the school student.
We just stuck in the second. We brought Dr. Saffini and seconded by Ms. Burke, on and favor. And, and your votes? He said if we have none, we are now in close.